Good evening, this is the Selectmen's meeting for the nineteenth of November, Town of Gulfstown. And our first order of business is our Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have minutes this evening from the fifth of November, public minutes. And this packet also includes the non-public.
Mm-hmm.
Five November has one session of non-public. Let's see, are we hearing?
Echoing?
Yeah. Mr. Suter, back in the videographer's room. We're getting a lot of feedback on our microphones here.
He was pushing back.
I know. You might have the mic there. Thank you in advance. No?
I can't hear. What do you hear?
Echoing.
Echo.
Echoing.
Oh, okay.
So, let's take up the five November minutes first, public and non-public. Does anyone have a motion along that line?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Do you want to know the few changes that I had seen?
Go ahead and tell us, Sue.
Okay. Page one, just open parentheses at D in the motion for non-public. Also, under Pledge of Allegiance, it was mentioned Selectman Adams, he didn't electronically sign it, he telephonically participated. I thought we'd change that. And page four, third paragraph down, let's see, second, fourth, fifth sentence. It starts with new, new, this is a hundred thousand piece of equipment. Just restructure that to say-
I'm sorry, which one? Page, you said page four?
Page four, third paragraph down, fifth sentence in, it starts with new.
On the new minutes or the old minutes?
November fifth, November four, November fifth.
The second full paragraph, right?
Yep, second full paragraph.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was in the third paragraph. I apologize. Okay. One, two, three, four, five?
Yeah, it starts with new. Should reflect that if we bought this equipment new, it would be a hundred and thirty thousand.
And you want to correct that to Explain Carl, not Carl.
I know.
Yeah.
And then on page five, in the section, Acceptance of Donation, Hillside Methodist Church, Selectman Collins becomes Selectman Adams, and package becomes the packet.
Mm-hmm.
Page-
Mine's going to call me late for supper.
Under meeting schedule, the last sentence, if anyone can't make a meeting, then they should discuss it with the board, is what it should say. And then finally, on page six, I had, Sue said, we received, just to clarify, under agreement to plow lambsnav in churches. Sue said, we received a draft agreement for lambsnav this morning. And then later in that paragraph, the last sentence should say, Sue added, this leads to, into a bigger issue on solid waste ordinance, if we can pick up on private roads, when they are possible, then maybe we should consider amending the solid waste ordinance in the future, or later.
Later.
Later, okay. That's what I had.
Sue probably took care of ninety percent of all the corrections we would have otherwise noticed.
It brings clarity, that's what I hope.
No further corrections necessary. Fellas in favor of the motion to approve these public and non-public minutes, five November.
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain, just getting in, so I missed part of the conversation.
Four zero one, and minutes reflect each, boy, a couple of minutes, we didn't start till like, or something.
Travis is a little heavy tonight coming this way.
We had two other sets of non-public minutes left over, one from August twentieth and one from October thirtieth.
October thirtieth, non-public, first section of two pages, and August twentieth, one session, one page.
Motion to approve.
I'll second on the October thirtieth.
Any corrections on the October thirtieth necessary? Those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Four zero one, Selectman Adams abstaining. And finally, we have the non-public, twentieth August, one page.
Motion to approve.
Twentieth of August.
Okay. And it appears Mark, you might have been answering at that one.
I was.
Any need for corrections? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Abstentions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, four zero one, Selectman Lemay abstaining. I'll take the first one here. This is a message from Jill Healy. She's with the Pinnardville Lions Club. And the letter is an appreciation concerning David Suter, who works at Gulfstown TV. And Ms. Healy writes, in September, I met with Dave Suter, Gulfstown TV, and we discussed a public service announcement to appear on Channel sixteen, giving attention to driving techniques to implement safety for all pedestrians, in particular disabled individuals. The masked road work resulted in more crosswalks, lights, more walk-like, I can't say that, walk-light intersections. Mr. Suter was informative, cooperative, very pleasant, as well as efficient to work with. The public service announcement was shown throughout the month of October, which was the White Cane Awareness Month, sponsored by the Lions Organization. He also created a DVD on the particulars of safe driving, coordinated with Officer Pulliyup and myself, which we gave to the driver education contractor who works with the regional high school. The Pinnardville Lions Club and Gulfstown Lions Club wish to thank Mr. Suter for his efforts and help. He made the project enjoyable as well as workable. He's a terrific resource for our citizens. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Suter, back there. Winter parking van. Take over and read that one.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Winter parking ban effective November fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. Gulfstown Police Department announces the upcoming winter parking ban will take effect on November fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. The parking ban is in effect for the winter months, ending April fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. The Gulfstown Police Department strictly enforces violations of the overnight parking ban. If weather conditions are favorable, written warnings may be issued during the first week of the ban. If during snow removal operations, a vehicle is parked so as to constitute a hazard, its removal may be requested by the Highway Department. The Gulfstown Police Department will investigate and make all reasonable attempts to locate the owner. If the owner or operator is not located, the vehicle will be towed at the owner's expense. So again, that's from November fifteenth to April fifteenth, the winter parking ban.
Selectman Lemay, do you have the letter that was sent to us from the town of Brookline?
Yep, I do.
Would you do the honors on that one?
This letter is received from the Brookline Board of Selectmen, dated November thirteenth, two thousand and twelve, to the Board of Selectmen, Town of Gulftown. Dear Board members, on Thursday evening, November first, the Brookline Fire Department experienced its largest structure fire in decades, when the showroom at Bingham Lumber was destroyed. A total of fourteen towns outside Brookline responded to the fire and provided much-needed assistance with equipment, water, and personnel. Over a hundred firefighters and thirty-five trucks were involved. The incident provided us with a clear demonstration of the benefits and critical importance of mutual aid. It struck us as remarkable to see departments working together in such coordinated way under the circumstances, especially given some must have been working together for the first time. Thankfully, the fire was successfully extinguished without any injuries. On behalf of the Brookline Fire Department and all town residents, we express our appreciation and Gulftown's timely and valuable assistance to Brookline and Bingham Lumber. Please extend our thanks to your fire department and personnel as well. Sincerely, the Board of Board of Selectmen, Brookline.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And so Chief O'Brien, on behalf of the Board, I'm extending my thanks for sending your crew and truck to Brookline to assist in that fire.
Longest runs I think the department's ever done.
Mr. Chair, I have one more, if you've received it. We had our Parks and Recreation Board of Directors meeting the other night. The Gulftown Parks and Recreation is presenting the all-new holiday review. It's a day trip to the Indian Head Resort, Tuesday, December fourth, two thousand and twelve. The cost is forty dollars per person. It basically goes on to say, enjoy a Christmas in New England day party at a scenic Indian Head Resort in beautiful Lincoln, New Hampshire. Your fun-filled day will include a delicious Christmas meal buffet with a welcome reception, add a flower show, dance band, Christmas carol, singing, and a sing-alongs. A free, yeah, a free picture with Santa will be taken as well, for your, for all of you that know Santas. Each person will also receive a lovely gift, even though if you've been naughty or nice, you will receive the gift. Price includes transportation, luncheon, welcome reception, photo, caroling, dance, band, flower show, floor show, taxes, dining, gratuities, and gift. For more information, if anybody's interested, please contact Stacia Hurley at six oh three four nine seven three zero zero three. Please make checks payable to the Royal Tours. Departures from one fifty-five South Mass Street, which is the Parks and Rec, will leave at nine forty-five AM, home approximately five thirty PM. If there are any cancellations that will be needed, if you've made your reservations, a seventy-two hour cancellation notice must be given so you get your refund. They're looking for a minimum of twenty-five people to have this trip. If they don't receive the twenty-five people, they unfortunately will have to cancel the trip, so they need a minimum of twenty-five people to have the trip.
Well, thank you for encouraging that they perhaps will have the twenty-five.
What was the date of that again?
The date is December fourth.
Is this one of their senior trips, or anyone?
It's a, it's a senior trip, but it's open to pretty much anybody and everybody. I guess they're having a hard time to-
Next announcement, there was a meeting of the municipal, New Hampshire Municipal Association, last week in Concord, and, excuse me, in Manchester. Look, Government Center located in Concord, we had a meeting in Manchester. And the Town of Gulfstown received third place for the annual report that the town published, covering the year two thousand-
Twelve.
Twelve. And so-
Eleven, I'm sorry, two thousand and eleven.
Eleven, okay. It's, it's awarded in two thousand and twelve for the town report that was published in two thousand and eleven. And our Assistant Administrator, Derek Horn, played a significant role in putting together that report. I think that's the one that featured the two-fiftieth celebration.
Right.
And, and we were placed third in the ranks of towns that had over eighteen thousand population and up. So that was a significant achievement to have our town report ranked highly by an hillside organization.
Can I add on to that if I could?
Please.
At that same meeting, they also recognized the Volunteer of the Year awards for folks in New Hampshire. There are only two this year. One of them was a schoolteacher from Plastown, the other one was our very own Susan Tucker, who was recognized for her many, many years of dedication, Parks and Rec, Conservation Commission, many, many other roles that she's filled in town, so that was, that was noteworthy as well. And just wanted to make sure that folks in GTV sixteen were aware of that, and then that award, prestigious award actually, that Susan received last Wednesday.
Congratulations from the Board to Sue Tucker for being recognized as Volunteer of the Year by the, recognized by the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And I'm going to conclude, well, I have, I have one further announcement. And this is from our town clerk here, Kathy Ball. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts and patriotic community spirit exhibited by Gulfstown voters, the candidates, and campaign staffs, poll workers, election officials, municipal employees, and also the high school student volunteers on the election day, November sixth. Voted turnout that day was seventy-eight point nine percent, and we had nine thousand two hundred and ninety-seven ballots cast. The supervisors of the checklist registered one thousand four hundred and thirty-one new voters that day, which therefore Gulfstown now has eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-three registered voters. The, I'm sure people visiting the polls that day would have seen lines most of the day for new registrants, and that was, we increased the number of names on the checklist by fourteen percent that day. One thousand four hundred and thirty-one new names. I truly appreciate everyone taking the time out of their busy schedules to support our elections. The efforts patience with the process and our community cooperation again showed what Gulfstown is all about. Thank you, Kathy Ball, Town Clerk.
I would like to recognize Kathy's efforts in making that so seamless and so organized. I got a lot of phone calls from people saying how pleased they were with how well it was organized.
Tremendous effort.
Yeah, and I did get quite a few people who made the same comment. Believe it, both of our polling locations, there were near-record turnouts of voters that day. Any further announcements? Next on the agenda would be our public comment session, and for the viewers watching, there are no public here, but this would be an opportunity for persons to provide comments to the Board if they wished to do so for three minutes, on subjects that are not related to the agenda of that evening. So, Mr. Querem, Director of Public Works, what do you have for us this evening?
Well, I come bearing information about our transfer station scale. As the Board knows, we need to replace the scale or repair the scale. We have a couple of quotes. Basically, we need to, what happened, the scale we have, it's fourteen years old, and it's under the concrete deck, there's a series of levers that support the deck. One of those steel levers snapped, so it needs to be replaced. The estimate to repair the scale is about a little over thirty-five thousand dollars. However, part of the reason that the metal fatigue and failed, at least our scale and our field, is due to the amount of road salt that is in the scale and passes over the scale. We do weigh all of our trucks in and out with salt. So what they've, they're actually recommending is that we replace the deck or replace the scale with a new scale, which instead of a mechanical lever system, it would be a hydraulic, basically a bunch of hydraulic load cells. They're all encased in stainless steel, so the salt wouldn't affect them. They also, the hydraulic system is much less susceptible to electromagnetic charge. We lose the scale a lot from lightning strikes. We have to wait, they have to come and replace load sensors quite often. Apparently, this hydraulic system is not as sensitive to a lightning strike, so the new system, hydraulic system, is actually less than repairing the old system. The estimate is thirty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. The scale, it'll take about five days to retrofit, remove the deck, and retrofit the pit to take, well, actually, either of these options is about a five-day construction, from when the parts are here. The estimate right now is that if we order the scale soon, it will take about a week to get its parts, and about five days to install it, so we'd be looking at about two weeks without, without the scale. What I'm asking the Board to consider doing is waiving the purchasing policy. Our current vendor is Northeast Scale, we've had a good relationship with them since nineteen ninety-eight, they installed the system we have now. Both of these quotes are from them. We did have one of their competitors here looking at the scale last week. They were supposed to get us a quote by Friday, as of closing today, we still haven't gotten the quote from them. So at this point, I would recommend we move forward with the hydraulic system from Northeast Scale and get it ordered tomorrow, and hopefully we could try to have the scale up and running the weekend after, not right after Thanksgiving, but shortly after Thanksgiving, the next weekend after that.
We don't recognize how important that scale is to your daily operations until it's taken out of service.
Yeah.
It's a critical piece. Any comments from the other Board members? Okay, Phil first?
Carl, this, I guess, repair, is this going to be in lieu of replacement?
Well, what we're recommending is replacement, putting the hydraulic system in instead of just repairing the mechanical lever.
Okay, because I wasn't clear, because one, I understood when you talked about the mechanical levers and stuff, but this is basically going to be a replacement?
Yes.
And using a different technology or weighing?
Yeah, the only, you know, the only downside to this is, which I don't think is a huge downside, but, you know, in CIP, we, we're going to replace the whole system in two thousand and fourteen. That included the deck. If you look at the deck, the deck doesn't look bad right now, but it is a concrete deck, very susceptible to the same chloride problems as the steel. So it's conceivable that before the hydraulic load cells fail again, we might have to redo the deck at some point, but right now, it, it looks fine. So basically, if we do this today, there's a fifty-four thousand dollar CIP item in our two thousand and fourteen matrix that would be removed, and we would just stop watching the deck, and somewhere down the road, we may have to rehab the deck.
Who was next? Carl?
What's your best guess on the deck replacement cost? You know?
You know, it's, it's just a concrete deck, so I would guess it's somewhere between, you know, the fifty-four thousand quote had included it.
So it's basically a reinforced concrete slab?
Thirty-four.
Probably there's some metal framing around it?
Right.
It just sits on top?
Correct.
Is that something that's really cast elsewhere?
Yes.
And then placed in, so it's not a week down once you-
No, 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 no.
Decide to replace that?
No.
Yes.
Yeah, one of the questions from the Budget Committee was whether or not there was any foresight into having, I guess, a larger deck, that, because right now, I guess, we can't weigh certain, like, trailer, tractor trailers or-
Yeah, it's, the issue is, you know, we only have a forty-foot deck, so when you have a tractor-trailer unit, you can't get the whole truck on the scale. We use it, or we try to use it, because we try to prevent our trailers from leaving the yard overweight. So what we do for our own use is we do what's called a split ticket, we weigh the truck, we basically weigh it twice, the front and the back, and then, that is not an accurate measure for commerce, you can't do that and bill somebody, but we do it for our own use. If you can't do that, you have to uncouple the trailer, you have to get the wheels on, and you lose a lot of time.
But it's not something that we have, I guess, it sounds to me that that would be a lot more expensive if we went down that road?
It would be considerably more, because you're talking a bigger scale, we'd have to redo the pit, you'd have a whole new deck, it would be a very costly item, and what we do for our traffic flow, current and what I see in the future, I don't really see a big need for that.
Scott, you bring up financing of this?
Well, that was my, yeah, my next question was, how are we going to pay for it? And the first thing that came to my mind was our premium holiday, that we're getting unexpected revenues from, which we can't expend more than our appropriation, but it gives us a little bit of a buffer in terms of, this is the end of the year, so, is there any discussion about how we're going to, where this is going to come from?
Well, the, as we heard several nights at that Budget Committee meeting, if you think in terms of bottom-line budget, the solid waste budget right now is actually in fairly healthy shape, because the maintenance cost of vehicles this year has not been in par with average. So we've, we've got about twenty-five thousand dollars left in that vehicle maintenance line. There's also the landfill contingency that's, we budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars, and there's a pretty hefty sum left of that. So within the solid waste line, I think there's enough contingency or, or there's unexpended monies that would cover this. Worst case, is solid waste might go over a couple thousand, but you'd have savings on the, on the public works. The good news we just got today, by the way, is we just got a letter, we opened a letter today from Casella, and our recycling has now gone to where we're going to start getting seven dollars and fifty cents a ton paid to us again. So we've gone from having to pay for our recycling, to now we'll get some revenue coming back for it. So it's, that's a little shift in our favor for the last couple of months of the year.
That's a market adjustment, I assume, just-
Yeah.
Let me just take a moment to change the focus a little bit. Scott, in a previous session, either once or twice back, we were considering moving money from some particular budget line to support an activity, and you requested to bring that to the Budget Committee, just to have them comment on it, and if they're, hear their concerns as whether we would go that route or not. This is essentially the same thing he's asking here.
Yeah, I mean-
What came out of that discussion?
Well, I, I think what came out of the discussion is, is for us to give the Budget, the Budget Committee the courtesy of letting them know, here's a situation that we're in, we did not budget for this, but we're going to have to move some monies around, and I think it's a matter of letting them know. We're not doing any type of, how shall we say, deficit type of appropriation where we actually need their approval legally, this is just a matter of just letting them know where we're taking it, from what particular line. But in the case of, and Carl was there at the last meeting- But, um, in the case of, uh, and Carl was there at the last meeting, um, we just needed to code, we, we had, we had purchased radios
Yeah.
from, from the salt line and, and that, that, that has, that, we explained why it's, it was a very transparent process. Unfortunately, it didn't get coded to the right spot, so we just wanted to make sure that it got coded correctly. So one particular line would be overspent, another one would be, would be underspent. But, um, I think it's just a matter of just letting the Budget, Budget Committee know. Um, I don't, I don't envision that they would have any, any, take any issues with it because for one, while the scale is down, it's, uh, we lose revenue, so
We certainly do.
Um, which is another topic of conversation.
Part two.
Yeah.
Uh, which we can bring up in a moment then, uh, okay. Yeah, I, I'd be personally in favor of getting the scale in, back in operation as quickly as possible and then following up with the, uh, discussions with Budget Committee. The, the prudence of us moving out smartly on this one.
So I don't mind making some motions if you want.
So would that be for sole sourcing to, was it Northeast?
I'm gonna make two motions then. The first motion is to waive our purchasing policy with respect to, um, the emergency repair slash replacement of the, uh, scale of the transfer station.
Second. Any discussion?
Those in favor of that, please?
Why aren't we just saying replacement? I think that's where we're going, why'd you say repair slash replacement?
Because it doesn't include the deck?
Because it doesn't include the deck. I just wanted to cover myself in terms of, we're not really replacing the entire, we're
So you're replacing the scale?
The scale, but not the deck.
The load cells and the, the guts of the scale, yeah, but not the deck.
If there's another way you wanna phrase it, I don't take any, any objection to it.
Now, did we just present two different numbers, one to repair and one to replace? But we're going with the replacement option, not the repair option.
The, the motion covers both options that allows freedom for the second motion. Okay, um, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion to waive the purchasing policy and the case, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, okay.
So I guess I'll make this, this one clear. Um, to, um, I'll make a motion to proceed with the, the DPW Director's recommendation to replace the current scale of the transfer station with a hydraulic scale at a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Is that fair enough?
Second that. Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion on the purchase of the, uh, hydraulic-based scale, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero, motion passes. Further discussion on this issue?
Yeah, just what are we doing with the, uh, with, no scale?
Uh, would you indicate what would, what would be a good outcome about weighing or having large loads of trash brought in?
Hopefully, we will not have large loads, uh, of trash because we do have no way to weigh things, so
We should, yeah.
No.
Yeah, the, the fear, we did talk about that option. The fear is that, um, if, if somebody takes the time to load a truck and come to see us, uh, 'cause no matter how we try to get the word out, we never get the word out to everybody. But if they've loaded a truck and bring it down and we reject them and send them away, there's a pretty high likelihood it is.
They'll find a place to dump it.
Somewhere.
Well, I guess my other question, is there, uh, how shall we say, a discounted flat fee? Um, I mean, if you have, uh, if you rent a, say, a forty-yard dumpster and it gets delivered at your house, I, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of around seven to eight hundred dollars and you just load it, whatever you want in that thing, and they, and they drop it off and they haul it off. So I mean, you know, to me, and I don't know what the disposal, actual disposal cost of those contents are, you know, but to me, if someone is bringing a considerable amount of, where they're bringing, uh, you know, tr- not trash, but it's
Demo.
Demo type. I mean, I mean, to me, you know, minimums of twenty-five, fifty dollars would, would seem to be practical. You, you know, knowing that the cost could be far greater than that if we weighed it. I mean, but it's something.
Well, I think the problem is that I'll let Sue address this, but I, I don't think even the board has the authority to just establish a fee without a series of public hearings and going through certain statutory requirements.
Phil?
But all we, we aren't really establishing a fee. What we're doing is
Changing your method?
We are temporarily changing the method due to an emergency.
I, uh, I, I chased that rabbit a little while today and I, I did the conversions. And obviously, some materials are heavier, roofing shingles are more heavier than if somebody brings us a load of, of, uh, lumber. The problem I ran into is, you know, I came up with a, a conversion rate of, um, you know, like twenty-one dollars a cubic yard for, if you convert the, uh, five cents a pound weight to, to, uh, yard. Twenty-one dollars a cubic yard would cover it and for lumber, it'd be more like sixteen dollars a cubic yard. After I did that, I did a little research, I went on a bunch of other town websites to see if I could find anybody that charges per load or per, you know, if there are people out there. Most towns now have scales, but I found a few that, uh, you know, then I went out and I looked at a pickup truck and I figured, oh, how much, how many yards does a bed of average pickup truck weigh? It didn't compute logically. I mean, an, an average pickup truck worked out to fifty-six bucks. And so I, I went into our scale software and I looked at a bunch of our customers, people that we know who come in regularly with loads of stuff, and it's all over the board, you know, uh
To take the lowest price?
Well, the lowest price is two bucks.
With foam in there?
Well, if somebody comes in with just a, you know, a small pile of demo and it's twenty pounds, that's the tolerance of scale, it's two bucks.
But if you have a minimum, I mean, someone can just say, this is the price and you can, if you don't like it, or the other thing we can do is we can just send out a NICSIL alert and let everybody know and publicize that we're not open. I mean, this way, people don't pack their stuff up. I mean, I just like to know, what's the downside here because
Illegal dumping and having to spend the time to clean it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but then again, you also have a lot of people on, that are like, oh, wow, you know, free, uh, free, free, I'm, I'm just, it's another issue.
Hi. Phil?
Yeah, I just, a question, um, is something that we might temporarily work something out with Manchester?
There's, you know, the, in, in my view, it's, it's very delicate. On a Saturday, we literally get hundreds of vehicles and we have a line going out, as does every other transfer station in the area. So if somebody showed up at our gate with a load of stuff and we said, well, you gotta run down a straw road, get us weight, slip, come back, I think that's gonna end up on the side of the road right next to the other stuff. Uh, so, so that's difficult and even, even, like, I tried to think through logistically our, if we just wanted to even, all right, we're gonna measure per yard. We'll have the arguments with everybody about how many yards it is. You know, we gotta have somebody there checking the truck, measuring the load, running back into the scale house 'cause the deck is not there anymore. So as it is now, the guy in the scale house has to run out, see what everything, what people have, if they, if it's a, like, a tire or, he's gotta run back in the scale, generate a scale, slip, run back out. So like on a Saturday when it's busy, people are gonna be out on Elm Street.
I guess this, is the risk of doing business and, or the cost of, you know, the cost of lost revenue of doing business and, uh, you, shows the importance of that, uh, scale to your operations and not having it for three weeks is part, maybe the cost of doing business.
Well, I heard two weeks, we're talking two weeks.
Well, it's been down for a whole week.
Well, true, but from this point forward, two weeks if we order it tomorrow.
Hopefully, you know, given a holiday in the middle of the year, I got my fingers crossed, but
You know, I, I, I can't see turning people away, no matter what option we choose. It's gonna be a nightmare, we've seen it in the past. Uh, the cost to clean up, the midnight dumping and the off-road dumping is gonna, is gonna be ex- extensive. And I can also hear the argument from people saying, well, couldn't you have foreseen that driving loads of salt was gonna cause corrosion and the failure of the scale house anyways and why weren't we doing it? And I mean, I think, in my opinion, we need to bite the bullet, get on with this, move as quickly as possible so we don't get ourselves in a position where we're trying to explain some fee that we're gonna establish perhaps outside our authority with, without a logical reason for establishing the fee. I, I, I think it's a, I don't think it's the road I choose to go down.
I wanna close this discussion unless there's gonna be a motion, so Phil?
What about portable scale?
Uh, it would take a couple of weeks to get them set up.
It would.
There'd be a cost to getting them there.
Couldn't, couldn't get them from DOT?
I don't think DOT, you know, they're not certified for commerce. There's like
They're certified to give people tickets.
They're not trying to give people money.
Which we've got, we, we get them.
Can I just make one, I just wanna make one comment, just 'cause Selectman Adams, uh, did say something that I, that could come up and that is the salt, uh, I just wanna assure people, we have saved on the salt line much more than the cost of the scale by weighing that salt in and it has become a very effective
It's also road salt from people bringing their vehicles in and it's not just
People drive over it every day of the week, you know? I understand, I wasn't being
No, 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 but I think it's important to, I think it's important to get that out, yes. I just think it, that's what I, I just wanted to address it for that very reason, 'cause it's
Closing comment.
So I guess the question is, can we legally enforce a fee right now because of the situation we're in?
I think as long as that fee, and I don't know how, what certainty you can say, would not impose any additional cost on anyone dropping off, then you're within your fee structure. But I don't know you can do that with certainty. Um, my question is, Carl, how many of these are commercial vehicles and are they regular commercial customers that you could notify, we'll close for two weeks for you folks?
The, the, the commercial folks, uh, with accounts, the ones we
With accounts, yeah.
Have addresses, 'cause we send them monthly invoices. So in the time it would take for us to get a letter out, we could notify them. Um, I'm not sure what that would do to them, 'cause it, uh
Could we make an arrangement with another town, they could double their, their rates?
Legally, we're not, like, say we have a local contractor that does a job in the city of Manchester. If we know that, we're not supposed to take that waste.
Right.
You know, legally, our transfer station only accepts waste generated in Goffstown. You know, the guys at the transfer station in Bedford are saying the same thing and the ones in Manchester are saying the same thing. So does it mean that it doesn't occasionally get, well, you know, we can't follow everybody around, but in theory, we're only taking waste generated in Goffstown. So if we shut the door, I don't know where that goes unless it goes to a completely commercial, you know, like a place like Epping, where they drive it all the way to Epping to a place that could accept it commercially. Uh, 'cause if they just go to another town or city, it's really not a legal place for them to bring it.
They can't, you mean, tell me that a contractor cannot bring his waste to Manchester?
Not unless it was generated in Manchester.
Yeah, what are we talking about in terms of lost revenue?
Well, it depends how you figure it out.
I know, here we are, we're very cavalierly saying we're not gonna do anything. I just wanna know, if it's, if it's a couple thousand a week, it's one thing. If it's ten thousand a week, that's something else.
No, no, it's, I think a couple thousand a week's accurate. It, it averages out to about six hundred dollars a day.
But this is more of a slow season for you.
Yeah, November's typically a little bit slower month.
And where is the harm in just telling folks, the transfer station scale is broken, please do not bring your, you know, uh, construction debris? If they come, we'll take it, but at least it'll discourage them for the time being.
I have a problem with that.
You know?
Please show your voter ID, you can still vote.
Well, I'm just saying, at least if we let them know that the scale is broken, please, please, you know, we, we expect it'll be fixed in three weeks
I think you're, I think you're advertising the scale's broken, bring all the down because we can't charge you.
I agree with you, Phil.
No, you're saying, you're saying, please do not come, that's what you're saying.
No, you're not.
At this point, enough has been said, including all the discussion here this evening, so, um, I'd like to move on from the next agenda.
What shall we take?
Does somebody care to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, uh, suspend the fees for, uh, any material that's required to be waived and to move expeditiously, as we had just done by the prior motion, to get it replaced and back into operation as quick as possible. I was gonna set a fee price, so
I was too.
I'm on the other end of the scale.
Yeah, no pun intended.
No puns.
I don't hear a second for that motion.
I'm all ears.
Are we gonna continue his motion before I start or?
We're gonna get a second.
Okay, all right. Um, due to the extenuating circumstances, um, for pickup trucks, fifty dollars. For the utility boxes on the back of the pickup trucks, the, the big utility boxes, um, a hundred dollars. If you have a single axle trailer, twenty-five dollars. If you have a tandem axle trailer, pull-along trailer behind your, your vehicles, fifty dollars. And I think if we were to ask the director or Carl, I think he'd say we're probably right in line with those figures.
I'll ask Carl that, but I need a motion first, second.
I'll second it for just, if I can address it. Um, at work, I have, whatever, whatever you name it for, for disposed. Now, it includes the actual, the truck itself, the gasoline to get to a transfer station, et cetera, but I can tell you that that is extremely fair in terms of the rate that we pay in insurance for, for debris removal.
Well, and it, it, it is
And that includes, if they drywall insulation, you know, you name it, you know, you're
Yeah, if you, i- if you do the math, if you do the math, that is very fair, considering a full load. But if you look at our history, the vast majority of loads coming in on our full loads. There's, there's, I mean, I can pass this around if you want, I didn't print, it's a hundred and forty-four page report. I didn't print it all, I just printed about ten pages worth. Uh, the vast majority of those loads are eight dollars, twelve dollars, sixteen dollars.
That's why I think that's what it is, or if you wanna give your scale out, your, your operator or somebody there the discretion to say, okay, you got
Don't give them the discretion, because then you're putting them on
People will fill it up.
Everybody will argue.
Well, I, I wanna speak to it. I'm not gonna support it because I don't think there's any justification for the numbers. It's not based on volume, it's not based on weight, it's based on vehicle type. That, to me, is no justification for setting a price. Doesn't speak to how much is in there, doesn't speak to what's in there. Some guy drives down and all he's got is a little bit of stuff that he wants to get rid of and he's gonna be charged for a full load. And I, I just don't think that we can justify that. And I think we're gonna have a lot of explaining to do.
I look upon it as, uh, unfortunately, uh, an unfortunate risk of doing business in the operations we have and maybe at some point in the future, we, we need to have a fallback plan for emergencies. But right now, we're, it's a learning curve for us and it's acceptable, we need to pay the price.
Just, just for the boys, just for kinda history's sake, when I started here in nineteen ninety-seven, we, there used to be a little chart on the wall of the transfer station. It showed a little picture of the pickup truck, it was a flat fee, the dump truck was as much of it. And I, I remember, uh, at the time, Mike Hillhouse was the attendant out there and I asked Mike, I says, how many arguments did you get in over that? And it was, uh, it was like, everybody argued about whether or not it was a big load, small load, so it's
But I'm not, I'm not differentiating between a big load, small load, middle load. It's a flat rate fee set for the load, that's it. So we're all paying the same price. Some people are gonna make out, some people are
Well, you just wait until the scale's fixed, come back.
Come back.
That's all.
Okay, uh, we have a motion before us where there's a range of fees depending on the vehicle or trailer ones brings to the transfer station. Those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Your, your
Aye.
I'm an aye.
Those, uh, opposed to the motion?
No.
Say nay?
No.
Nay for the chair. Uh, motion passes, three to two.
Effective, effective date, please? Effective date starting, uh
Retroactive.
No, tomorrow. Okay, the, the starting date would be, uh, eleven twenty tomorrow. And I had put, um, fifty dollars for pickup truck loads for the, for the standard pickup truck. I had put, uh, was it a hundred dollars I said for the
Utility?
For the utility, the guys that come in with the four-by-eight or six-by-eight beds on the back of the trucks, a hundred dollars. If you have a single axle, uh, utility trailer, twenty-five dollars. If you have a dual axle, uh, heavy-duty trailer, fifty dollars.
One clarifying question. We get, uh, the county brings in like a rack-body truck, we bill them the five cents a pound. Now, they fall into
Tell them to go to Manchester.
I would say they fall
They can go there too, right?
For right now, for the, for, for the two week, like I said before For right now, for the, for, for the two week, like I said before, light, heavy, medium, whatever, we're paying a, we're paying a flat rate fee, and that's it.
Put Mike back on the scale.
If you have any problems, call the three selectmen who voted for it.
I think I'll add one, I think I will add another.
Which three are those, please, give me names? I'm working the station eighteen tomorrow. Chief's not saying much out back, he's not smiling.
All right.
I have a question for Carl, regarding transfer station holiday schedule?
Yes.
It says Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November twenty-eighth, oh, that's twenty thirteen.
So the transfer station is closed this Friday, right?
No, half day Wednesday and Thursday, right?
Twenty-second, I think it's the twenty.
Closes at noon on Wednesday.
Can you bring up the website as long as it's being discussed here on TV? I know it is, I just looked it up because I'm gonna be using it once.
Prior to this, way prior to this, and it's no, it's brush.
By the way.
Which is free.
Unless it's commercial brush.
It's re-roofing the house.
That's the business.
Commercial brush.
That's, that's my vis, that's my side business.
Think if you go into DPW.
That's where I'm going.
Should come up on the first.
Get back there.
Wednesday at noon and Thursday.
Do you have one that says transfer station?
I don't believe you. He looked, he just looked at it. So Wednesday, after they're closed?
Close at noon on Wednesday and they're closed on Thursday.
It's on the phone board, I could grab it, but.
They're open on Friday.
On the website.
And Saturday.
The holidays, huh? Hours of operation, here we go.
Yeah, check there. Yes.
Thursday, November twenty-second, transfer station closed at noon on the twenty-first and all day on the twenty-second. Trashroom cycling one day late after the holiday.
But there's, Carl, one, one day late, is that a, a double run on Friday?
No, um, Thursday's route would be collected on Friday, Friday's route is Saturday.
Thank you.
And Tuesday's back to normal?
Yes.
As well as Wednesday.
Thursday and Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Sue, would you, uh, take up the town administrator's report?
Thank you, yes, uh, meeting scheduled tomorrow night is Budget Committee at seven o'clock, leaving you in this room this week. Consensus folder, you have manifest for November twelfth, accounts payable two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents. And payroll of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-six cents. The November nineteenth manifest include accounts payable for one million, three hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and thirty-two cents. And payroll of a hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. You also have the two thousand thirteen transfer station, um, and the two thousand thirteen parks and rec holidays schedules in your packet. You have a request from Gold Star Mothers to decorate the pine tree in front of Town Hall for the holidays. A letter to YMCA regarding traffic light at the Alard Center. Raffle permits, uh, for Destination Imagination, Momview Middle School, December fifteenth, and Saint Lawrence Church calendar raffle for January two thousand thirteen. Event permits include Goffstown Main Street Programs Tree Lighting on November thirtieth, and Goffstown Christian Fellowship Tree and Reef Sales in Craft sphere on eleven twenty-fourth. And Paul Filto Christmas Tree Sales December first to December twenty-fourth, and we had a late arrival today, a while feeling, that is in your signature folder.
Motion to approve the consensus folder? Second. Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Five zero.
Thank you.
Question. On the Parks and Rec request?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I should've probably said it before we voted on it, but I'm trying to, uh, figure out exactly what it is that they're trying, that they're requesting.
They're switching President's Day for the day after Thanksgiving.
Okay, and what is the list, then, one to ten, is that the current list, or is that the new?
No, that's the new list.
Okay, I don't see President's Day on it.
Because they took it off.
They replaced it with the day after Thanksgiving.
Well, this is what doesn't make sense. We would like to trade President's Day for the day after Thanksgiving, by working on President's Day, we are still able to follow the school calendar, which our youth program currently follows. So, or they want to work President's Day?
Yes.
Yes.
It's not listed on the list of.
Well, these are the holidays.
Days that are off.
These are the days are off. These are the proposed days, they're off for holidays.
Okay. But the day after Thanksgiving is not listed.
Because.
It's been explained in another theory.
It has, it is listed, it's just out of order.
Number three, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's where President's Day used to be, okay, that's why it's lighter, okay, okay.
Yeah. Right. Assessive recommendations tonight includes Veterans Tax Credit, uh, denial recommended for map nine lot twenty-six eight, because one of the three owners currently receives a Veterans Tax Credit. An intent of timber cut, map seven lot fourteen, and we got a new intent to cut today, map nine lot thirty-three two, and also the two thousand twelve equalization study.
That's nine dash thirty-three two?
Yes.
Motion to accept the assess's recommendation.
Second.
In favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Thank you, you also have a road tracking form completed by Planner Brian Rose for acceptance of a slope and drainage easement and assist drainage easement on map three lot twenty-eight.
I'm making a, a motion to accept the slope and drainage easement and assist drainage easement for map three lot twenty-eight.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Five zero.
That's all we have.
From your material you've prepared?
That's it.
We'll go into the, uh, selectmen's discussion on our agenda now, old business. Under new business for the selectmen, let's take up special articles first, that would appear on the ballot next to the voters, uh, the warrant, excuse me, next, uh, march. And Scott, I think we're discussing, uh, special articles rather early here, aren't we?
Well, here's what happened, um, so I could probably just maybe segue into a little bit of the Budget Committee report, but the Budget Committee, um, over the last two nights, spent time looking through the town's budget and, and the department heads came in and kinda gave an overview, they were able to ask questions, et cetera. Several of the members of the Budget Committee, um, wanted to know what special articles were being put on prior to them, you know, taking action on the budget. Because they're looking at it as a, you know, overall net, um, tax impact, shall we say. So, um, here's the, like, the, uh, the end result is that tomorrow night, we're starting with the schools, and then it's Thanksgiving. And then, we're gonna go through another round, another day, so the following Tuesday would be schools. We may not be going back to the town budget till the following Thursday, so a week from Thanksgiving. So, if the board did not want to take action tonight on some of these, that would be okay, but we would have to take, they, they really do want action, some sort of action on our part, prior to them starting their deliberations.
So the only ones the board hasn't taken any action on are the ones that appear in the, um, I shouldn't say.
That are not highlighted, right?
Right.
Right.
And the ones that are highlighted, those are the ones that are.
Special article.
Special articles, you.
The middle column should say two thousand thirteen to, um.
Right.
Yeah.
These are the ones that are use of ballot, fund balance?
The highlighted ones, they, um, are, have funding.
Right.
Three of them are just use of fund balance.
Not year-to-date, two thousand thirteen?
Yeah, two thousand twelve year-to-date should be two thousand thirteen, this was the.
Not year-to-date?
No. Um, the four highlighted ones, three of them are funded a hundred percent by fund balance, and the largest of the four, uh, is a combination of other funding, but it's totally offset with other funds.
Is there any use of fund balance on that one, or no?
This one, yes.
Okay, what was that amount again?
Was it a hundred and twenty?
One, one, the, one twenty, I thought, right?
Around that, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Now, we can't give you any certainty on the price of the finance software, because we're having demos from the committee narrowed it down to three. And the, the, uh, three vendors have been coming in, we have one more, uh, demo to do, and there's a range, um, in price, but it won't be more than three hundred.
Yeah, I understand they're all below three hundred, some considerably.
Yes. The range is one hundred to three hundred. All different levels of functionality, too, we're finding out.
The hundred thousand dollar one is probably glorified version of QuickBooks.
No, it's more than that, and we saw that one, was the first one that came in.
On the, uh, I just wanna bring up the fire equipment revolving fund, um.
Capital reserve fund?
Capital reserve fund, excuse me. Is it prudent to keep depositing something into that fund every year?
Well, but, but, we, when, the night that you weren't here, we, we talked about that, you know, we, we talked about minimums and, and maximums. Um, and I don't have it with me, but I thought the minimum was fifty, and I thought the maximum was, we're talking about a hundred, a hundred and fifty, I thought, I, I could be wrong.
I believe it was one fifty.
Okay, so, and I think we talked about that in the sense that it would enable us to leverage grants, you know, so if we had a grant where that required a ten percent or a twenty percent match, we'd have something to leverage the grant. So, if I, if I could, Mr. Chair, I, I think we have to also, it's, it's quick to jump right into this, but we also should really take a look at what our budget, you know, looks like. So, and in some cases, sometimes maybe it's the cart before the horse, I mean, should we be talking about, hey, where's, where does the default budget look like, where are we at now? Because, but it's gonna have some ramifications. Sue did a tax rate calculation for the, um.
For the Budget Committee?
And where we are in terms of expenditures or appropriations over last year, and I think that would be important to kinda go over before we start talking about this.
Yeah, with the count, the tax rate calculation came up to ten dollars and twelve cents. This year, the town size at nine thirty-nine, and last year, we were at nine seventy-one.
Can we use the, the white, do you mind if I, if we start using that, 'cause I think it's helpful? Yeah, just to put some numbers up. So two thousand and twelve, this is what we're in right now, this is two thousand and thirteen, so our net.
Now, remember, two thousand twelve is a default budget year.
Right, no, I understand that, I'll even put that down, that was the default budget. And we, what was our appropriation? With all special articles, everything?
With everything?
Yeah.
Two thousand twelve, nineteen million.
Yeah.
Four hundred and thirty-five thousand.
I'm just gonna go fourteen, four, thirty-five, okay, is that good for a price?
That's millions, yeah.
Okay, that's millions, okay. All right, and then, that's everything, and now, everything that we have done so far, which does not, and that includes those four special articles, because those are no tax and, I mean, we're not appropriating anything more, which we got money coming back in, so what is that?
Twenty-one million.
Yeah.
Five hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Five, five, three, okay, so that's a difference. Hey, I gotta look at your.
I'll do it for you. Two million. One hundred and seventeen thousand, five ninety-seven.
Two. Two million, what was that?
Two point.
One?
Two point one one seven.
One one seven.
But you have offsetting revenue for those of one point three five.
Okay, so the net difference.
Okay.
Which is where you're getting your tax rate.
Seven hundred sixty-six thousand.
Seven six six.
Seven, seven, two.
All right, well, let's go there. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, my, my numbers might be off, but aren't we somewhere, our default to this is around four to five hundred thousand, more than, I'm sorry, less than this number here, if I'm not mistaken, right?
No. No, 'cause you know what, we, we, first of all, we're not finished with the default calculation, we're still working on that. You've gotta look at, sewer is a big difference, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Right.
Is the difference between what they're asking for and what they had.
Right.
So their default is going down, too.
Is that coming in there?
Yes, that's all part of that, yeah.
It's all part of that net difference?
Yeah, 'cause we added them all up together.
If you go to that, the tax calculation one again, that last one.
Yeah. But the revenue's in there, too, so it's a wash, sewer is a wash, but if you're getting into default, you have to add in sewer default.
Yeah, here's where I wanted to go, was the, the net appropriations, does those help?
So you want, other than right down here?
Right.
So twelve point four seven seven this year.
Right.
And thirteen, five twenty-two next year.
So it's about a million, okay, that, that's where I was going.
Okay.
So.
Next row down, put the net below the two numbers.
Yeah.
Do it in here, so the net.
Difference is one point oh four four.
Which is what the rate is based on?
It's about one million.
Yeah.
Okay, now, no surprise, our road program is one million more than last year. Okay, because we are five hundred thousand and we appropriated one point five, okay, so the difference, you know, so that's, that's, that's where we're at right now. Is that, is the road program, that's, we, we put that one million dollars back in, everything else, we've kind of massaged into the, in, into that final number, so. I know you talked about a number that was less for the road, I'm just saying, we've talked about this, we've talked about, and I know, David, you're a, adverse to a special article for roads, I'm just saying, but it, it is a million dollars that we're talking about here. And then if we do anything else, it's gonna go more.
And, and my point was, it's, uh, we've got to, to me, I would like to put the road program back on a sound basis within the budget, not at the risk of special articles. So, uh, yeah, well, that's an interesting analysis, that the increase is roads, and, and that's where, probably where it should be.
Yeah, the, um, but, but then, it's not, like, it's in isolation, so it's, it's a net, you know, one million, and then when you take all these things out and you go to, you know, go to tax rate, it's what, seventy-some odd, what was it, seventy-some odd cent increase, I thought?
Well, uh, what are you comparing to, this year default budget, or the last year we had our regular budget?
No, la, this year.
This year?
This year, yeah. So, you know, so that someone paid their tax bill, what they're gonna expect. I thought it was around seventy cents, I maybe.
Seven, seven point eight.
I'm getting false, hold on. Be faster, do it by hand. Seventy-three cents.
Okay. Seventy-three cents. So, and that doesn't include anything else that. So, and that doesn't include anything else that we do here, so if we put in money for any of these other things, that number is gonna go up. So.
Except the bond, because the bond is the revenue offset, so that's neutral the first year.
It'd be neutral the first year.
Following year when you make your payment, in two thousand fourteen, that would go up.
And we also have to factor in that we've got the potential of another bargaining unit to, that'll be on the ballot as well. So, I'm just. You know, my sense, I'll just give you my opinion, is that I just don't think that there is gonna be an appetite for more than what you kinda, that's in the highlighted here, just don't.
What about, there was a CRF that I added in here.
Yeah, I saw that for, I don't think that's gonna fly.
Which one?
The one that was for vehicles, that was for DPW.
Seventy-three, eight sixty?
I mean, that's 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 not gonna fly in the budget committee yet, I'll put you that way. And I don't think it flies even here for me, but. But.
That was, uh, you folks came up with that idea in response to cutting other lines in CIP. So that if salvage equipment came up, that was a good buy and had a few hours on it, that that, at the state auction, that that might be where he would go to, to get the money for it.
I'll just jump on this word, I mean, I I would be inclined to put money into a fire equipment capital reserve fund because we have had very good success in getting grants. And I think we should be talking like minimally fifty thousand dollars for that, that's just, that's just me. I think it's prudent to do it, there's there's, there is grant money, whether it be a forestry truck, whether it be other types of, we've been very fortunate to get to get grants, but you need to, it shows, it's better for our application if there's money to offset it, so.
What would the result be in the tax change?
Well, are you keeping the seventy-five in or not?
Cents, oh, if you kept the seventy-five, if you took the seventy-five out.
Yeah, what's the difference, in or out, what's the difference on the tax rate?
It would be slightly less if you take the seventy-five out.
But by how much?
Penny?
Three cents, money, okay, that's all, one people will get a cent for the order of magnitude we're talking about here.
It's still on the order of seven cents per hundred thousand.
Yes, right around there, seven to eight cents per hundred, every hundred thousand dollars that we appropriate is about seven to eight cents.
Three or seven and a half.
Yeah.
You said seven or eight cents per thousand?
Seven to eight cents.
Per hundred thousand.
Per hundred thousand.
Seven and a half cents figure.
Yeah. And that's and that's a rough, that's a.
Appropriation, whether it's up or down.
Right.
So if we're to cut that to fifty thousand, we're talking about three and a half cents.
Somewhere in that range.
So what happens if we cut that to fifty thousand and the chief is lucky enough to get a second grant in that year, and we don't have the money for that grant? I was thinking of a hundred thousand myself.
We have to juggle, then we have to juggle like we do, like we're doing now at the scale.
Well, if we had that seventy-five thousand dollars for the equipment vehicle, we could steal it from that one.
Not if it was set up for DPW.
Budget committee does have some problem with us putting, having budget lines for every possible contingency.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, only half of them come true, what do we do with the rest?
And I think, and I'll be honest with you, I I have a problem with the seventy-three cents, I do. Um, I don't, I think, you know, the new normal is kind of what we're in right now, and since we're, I mean, I'm just, I'll just, I'll just tell you what my cards are, um, my cards are that I'd, I'd take I put a million dollars towards our roads and I would put a, maybe consider putting a special article for the other five hundred thousand, give voters the choice if they wanted to spend it, and and put it into the default like we did last year, but fund it at a million. Um, and then give them some choices here. But that's 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 my concern.
Scott, what do, what would you like from the board here concerning the special articles coming out of this evening's discussion? Do we need to actually take a vote or just, uh, we're, at this point, we're happy with what's being proposed here?
Um, if we had a vote, that's great, I can go back and say, here's where we are. If we didn't, and I had some sort of a straw poll, or I kinda knew where the board was leaning, I can also convey that, but they're gonna want a definitive answer by a a week from this Thursday.
Now, they know that it's not definitive because you could get petition articles in second Tuesday in January.
Those are petition articles, that's not something that that this board offers.
Know what the Board of Selectmen is putting forward for special articles at this point. So there's three that you have to make a decision on, it's the fire station, the fire equipment capital reserve fund, and then that DPW capital reserve fund, those are the three that really weren't decided.
Yeah, so. Again, I'll I'll, I don't mind taking the lead here, um, I would do away with the CRF for the DPW cause I don't think it's gonna fly anyway, and if we wanted to then substitute that seventy-five thousand dollars for the fire department one, I'd be fine with that. Fifty or seventy-five, I'm not gonna, that's no big deal.
I'd I'd go for the fifty, I mentioned earlier.
Okay.
So say that again, you're talking about dropping the two hundred and fifty thousand?
I would drop the seventy-five thousand cost, which is the second one from the bottom for the DPW CRF, period, just drop it totally.
Okay.
And then, um, for the two hundred and fifty thousand, for the line above it, for the fire one.
Right, yep.
I think fifty, seventy-five thousand, I don't know what we can kinda come to agreement on, I'm okay with fifty, I'm okay with seventy-five too.
Well, remember, you still have your collective bargaining agreement that you don't know the final amount yet on that.
I'm comfortable leaving seventy-five, just shifting it over.
Would you like to leave it at seventy-five for the initial discussion, budget meeting?
Yeah, I'll go with that.
Is it zero fifty or seventy-five?
Seventy-five. Can't get a hundred? I'll go with seventy-five.
So what'll that do to?
The same as we currently have right now.
Currently have, but it just took one in, substituted one for the other. We already have the cul- uh, okay, we got one, the fire station renovation, um, again, just give you my assessment. I served in that committee, we've gotta do something about the fire stations, um, I re- I totally recognize that. Um, I I talked to the chief about this a couple of weeks ago. You know, I'm trying to look at, I mean, I'm wearing two different hats, I'm wearing a budget committee hat, I'm wearing a selectman's hat, and from touring the Bartlett School, I I think we defer to the school this year, and if they, you know, cause I think that has to get done, that school in my opinion, comes first before our fire station does.
What are the schools going forward with?
Bart, uh, they're not doing the, um, I talked to Diane, they are not, they took a vote, they are not proceeding with any athletic fields. So the only thing that they have right now is that, is the elementary school, and then they also have contracts, so they may not even, I don't even know if they're even.
Elementary schools, they coming forward?
Yeah, cause what hap- what happens is that in order to accommodate the re- the renovations at Bartlett, they're gonna do, uh, from what I'm told, Maple Avenue first, shift students over, that's, I think that's what I've heard, so I'll get more of that at the uh, budget committee level.
So what you're saying is not to do anything for the fire station renovations?
No.
What if we do, what if we do, uh, engineering plans?
Cause that's, there's still gonna be a cost.
Yeah, put something in for a cost, at least for that, at least that way, next year, the chief could have some numbers. Cause we're gonna be looking at the same thing, we're gonna be looking at the three stations, and they're projected out, but at least that way, you would have some numbers for one for for.
I just wanted to say that this committee did a great job, and I think that the plan that they have is the plan that we have to execute. You know, I mean, we've been, we've been jerking around with this thing for at least ten years. This plan that we have before us is the one that I think this board or future boards needs to exercise and implement. Um, the question is, is it's just when, and I think what we learned last year is that when we ask for too much, we get nothing, or if we, so, that's my, that's my concern, and.
I I think personally, the need's there, but when you look at the economic indicators, things are starting to turn. And I don't think that this year is necessarily the year to do it, I think it's, I, we take a breather for another year, let the economy continue to turn a little bit more. And I think next year, we'd have a better position to argue from, that's my feelings.
What I'd, what I'd like to do, if we could, I mean, do we, you're you're an engineer, I mean, what would, what are we talking about to start to do, to do some preliminary engineering work, I mean, are we talking, is it twenty-five thousand, is it a hundred thousand or something like this?
I suspect it's more like six figures than than five, cause you've got three different stations.
Right, but we were talking about phasing it.
Well, I understand, but, so are you gonna phase the engineering, and only do the engineering for one station, and then, that doesn't even make sense. It would seem to make sense, if you're gonna do the engineering, you do it as a package.
And wouldn't you wanna see that all wrapped into the bond, so that you know that you have money to follow through on that engineering?
I I would.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I I support the concept proposed by Selectman Gross. I personally would like to see the school move out with a a bond on the elementary school. And I would sincerely hope that the budget committee favorably endorses that whole- wholeheartedly.
And we'll wait till next year for the fire station bond?
We we have a well-thought-out capital improvement plans on the fire station, I agree with Scott on that. And and the the concepts proposed for the fire station will be, uh, are well-thought-out and will support several years of of consideration, and it gives us the opportunity to move out for another bond next year.
But I think we start the process now. Because the projects that I've been involved in, sometimes they take a couple of years to pass. And I would like us to see, I'd like to s- I'd like for us to get behind more of a full-blown effort and say, okay, here is, we're taking a pass this year, but by the way, here are what the plans call for, here's, here's the vision. And get that into the community, whether it be TV shows, let's do that now, let's do that this year, so that it's, it's no surprise, this is where we're going. This is the plan that's been adopted, full steam ahead, as opposed to, we're gonna have another committee, cause we're not having another committee. This is, the report is a great report, and it took the most cost-effective way of addressing the deficiencies, the deficiencies that we have at our fire stations. But now it becomes a more of a PR, uh, public awareness, education campaign to let folks know what are these problems. And I think the chief did a good job in saying that, when you look from the outside, everything looks all pretty, but when you get inside, or you see like the electrical or some other things, you know, it's, it's not so good.
Did David get sent to do the school board meeting now?
No, he's back there.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So, I mean, I I would agree, we, communications is key, and I think we've begun it here tonight, people are watching, get a flavor for where we're headed with this. You know, schools this year, fired needs next year.
There's another, so, there's another big ticket item that was not on, it's a special article, but it was in our budget. And um, kinda got mixed, uh, reviews, shall we say. Uh, and that was the, if you recall, remember we were, we we did our priorities and we, and we had put down there the um tractor trailer? Again, I don't know trucks from anything, alright, I'm not a truck guy.
One truck's gonna have almost a million miles on it.
One truck, I'll give you the miles, it was seven, almost eight hundred thousand.
By the time.
Right.
He, the point we wanted to make, or the point he was trying to make is by the time it's done and gone through, he'll he'll have nine hundred and something, close to a million miles on that truck.
I just wanna just to, if I could, because, okay. According to, this is the CIP, that's, this was dated in, uh, I'm not sure when it was last updated, so I don't know the that, I I wanna get those numbers from Carl.
Yep.
But according to the CIP matrix, one of the freight line tractors has six hundred and forty-seven thousand miles on it, right? You know, that, when this thing was printed, I guess, or when it was last updated, and then, and that was a nineteen ninety-five. And then there's another one.
It's running, but it's running right now.
Yeah, that's our backup.
Okay.
And then, the other one is a two thousand four freight line tractor, and that has three hundred and twenty-six thousand, okay? So, again, I'm not the truck guy, but there are some truck people that are on the budget committee, and they were saying that these tractor trailers, it's it's not, it's not uncommon for these things to go six, seven, hundred, million miles. So then it raises the question, is that vehicle, the vehicle that we should be, should we have prioritized it where we're, where we did? I just, I'm just raising that as an issue because my conversation with the budget committee was, we've def- if you look at the list of the things that we deferred for vehicles on the, on, especially on the DPW side, there was a lot. And I had suggested, if the, if you have a problem with that particular one, and you, and there's a consensus that we can put that off for another year, then what other piece of equipment can we slot in its place? Because.
If we need to.
If we need to.
That's a big F.
But the ten wheeler was one, if um, if I'm not mistaken, help me on this one, but didn't we, three, two, three years ago, we 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 did, we took the body off of the ten whee- right, we took the body off the ten wheeler, I mean, the the.
We took, we took the dump body off.
And then we.
And we, we put a new, the, a new dump body on the exist.
On the existing one, but now that one is starting to have.
Frame.
Frame failure or something, right?
That's exactly what I said was gonna happen. You're right, I remember Carl saying.
I did say. So, but that's the one that we deferred. So.
Yeah, there's one, he said, that probably won't pass inspection.
Right.
It's that one.
And which, what is that, the loader?
No.
No, I believe that's the ster- the sterling, the uh.
I'm just, uh.
Ten wheel dump.
How much?
Oh, it was, it was up there, it was a two hun- it was a two hundred and, hold on, one eighty-five.
One eighty-five, yes, we passed on that one, that was called a truckless S and P.
Right. So that's a nineteen ninety-nine, so that's a thirteen, I think, I don't know the, I'm just saying, this is something that I'm gonna be faced with in in another two or three budget sessions as to, if this motion's to cut, then I wanna be able to say, fine, if I respect your opinion on this trap, on this tractor trailer, but if we do that, then we're, we're gonna be in a bigger hole, that's not gonna go away.
Let me ask you a question, when you say tractor trailer, that's two things you're talking about, the tractor and the trailer.
Talk about the tractor, the tractor part, Phil was.
Okay.
One eighteen.
One eighteen-ish, yeah, something, yeah, one eighteen.
That's in.
I I, uh, my point of view on it is, I would like you to get further justification from the Director of Public Works just to have more figures available in your hip pocket.
Well, can I ask Carlos to chat with him about that then? Cause you're, you're, the other, the question that I had also, and again, I'm just trying to use some common sense here, but why do we use, here's the question, do we use the backup tractor? And what does it use for, how often, and I, here's the reason why I asked that that question. If you had a garbage truck, there's a need to have a backup garbage truck, because if one goes down, needs maintenance, et cetera, you need to pick up the trash or the recyclables. If the tractor went down, that's something that you probably could call in somebody to haul your, or rent, or rent. Uh, unlike an ambulance or other things, where you just simply cannot get another one. So, what, do, so maybe that, do we need to have a backup? I I don't know, you've been doing this for a long time, I mean, is there a real good justifiable reason to have a backup tractor? Other than, well, we tried, the other one got old, we were, we were gonna, you know, so we kept it as a backup, you know, like, do you know what I'm saying? Sometimes you keep it because you're just not gonna, you're only gonna get ten grand for it, or in salvage or something.
Some of the things we ran into were getting people to do.
But if you're paying somebody, if you're going into.
It doesn't, you know, that's, that all works in theory.
Okay.
But when it comes down to it, where these things have to, this gets full, it's gotta go.
Right, but even if it's, that's the case, I mean, couldn't you make the argument that to rent a tractor, you know, we rent, we rent, uh, you know, excavators for crying out loud, I'm just saying, if.
If, and that's a big if.
Right, it's a big, if we need it.
But I mean, we're trying to reconcile, keeping the tax rate down, yet moving forward with some significant expenditures, like the schools, even though I understand we're gonna bond them, but, you know, to the voters, it's an expense, it's an expense right now, and if we're gonna reconcile some of this, some of this stuff is gonna have to come off the table. If we've got vehicles that are running, uh, just like any of us would do with our families, families, if they're running, and we have some other need, we wait on the vehicle.
Yeah, I just don't know, I mean, you'll, you'll find out more from Carl, I mean, if that chassis, I guess, is in such horrific shape that it can't wait another year, I don't, I don't know that.
Not only that, the engines, they usually get rebuilt at six hundred thousand.
You're talking about track, I'm talking two different things, I'm talking about, one of them, you're talking is the tractor.
Talking about the tractor, yeah.
I'm talking about. No, no, to me, it makes sense, the tractor thing, it almost seems to make sense to me, I'd like to know why, what Carl's justification is, but then I'm wondering, did we, should the tractor have been there, or should this ten-wheel dump, what should have been in its place, so I don't, I don't know. We might need him back here to talk about this, but it's, these are. We might need him back here to talk about this, this, these are big mo- big-ticket items, so.
It's leaving CIP, Public Works vehicles as they are right now, gathering some more information to provide our budget.
Yeah, for next week, because this way I can have some, something to work with for the Budget Committee when I meet with them next Thursday.
We need, we need more information on the vehicles from the mechanic.
Yeah.
What we need.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I have a note here.
Okay.
Thank you.
So then, Scott, thank you for your.
No, no problem.
Fine work on the budget proposals.
The other thing we, we talked about, I know it's a small amount, but milfoil, um, any, did, did we have a?
That's in conservation.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So that's already there, so it's not, okay, that's two thousand?
Two thousand dollars, yeah.
Okay. And I, and I guess we can, I'll just let the Budget Committee know that, you know, depending upon what they do with the budget, you know, we always reserve our right to.
Sure.
To do a special article, so, I mean, if they were to come back and.
If they cut something, then.
Cut something, then we'll have to decide if it's important enough to.
Your response is either do it as a special article or go full with your own budget number at the deliberative session.
Right.
So what do we do with the fire station renovation, is that off the table now? That's the way I heard it, Phil.
Do you want a motion, or?
I'm just asking, cause I didn't know if we concluded.
I think a motion would be helpful to clarify exactly your intent at this point in time on CIP, on, uh, special articles.
For that, for that one initiative.
For everything, for the seventy thousand, uh, coming out of DPW.
I'll, I'll make them. I'm gonna start from the top, because I think it's, it's easier, this, this way.
Okay.
Um, and then the, the two thousand's a budgetary item now, so that's not, that's a budget item. So, uh, first motion is a motion to put forth a special article for the Goffstown Main Street program in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mark?
Aye.
Is that five zero zero?
Five zero zero.
Yeah, I didn't hear Phil, that's why, no.
Oh, I voted.
Okay.
Next one, a, a motion to put forth a special article for an amount up to three hundred thousand dollars for finance software.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero.
Next, um, motion for a special article in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four twenty-five for the purpose of IMC software for the Police Department. Use of fu- and using the fund balance, I should have also said.
Do we clarify that for the corporate one?
I'm gonna, I'll, I'll go back and I'll, I'll do that.
Yeah, I'll second that one, with the understanding from the reserve fund.
Those in favor of the IMC software?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to restate my motion on the finance software, um, I'd like to amend that. The funds would be, the use of the fund balance, up to three hundred thousand dollars of fund balance.
I'll second that amended motion.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, next is, um, a special article in the amount of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to repair the culvert and the slope failure near the county farmland, is.
Correct, using the reserve.
Using the, right, fu- use of fund balance.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, next is to, uh, put forth a special article of, for seventy-five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Those in favor of the Fire Equipment Capital Reserve Fund?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
And the next is, I'm gonna skip that one, because I'm not, I'm not taking any action on it, so I'm not gonna make a motion not to do it. Um, root, uh, motion to put forth a special article in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred dollars for the Route one fourteen, uh, thirteen intersections with funds.
Two sources.
Coming from a variety of sources. And up to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars of use of fund balance.
Second that.
It's a hundred and three, by the way.
Hundred and three thousand dollars of fund balance.
I'll second that.
Those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, four, one zero. Here to make any.
Yeah, one more.
Minority report on that.
No, I just, I think it'll be, um, a, a motion to, um, defer the fire station renovation plan for one year. Um, in lieu of, uh, other.
Considerations.
Other considerations, um, however proceeding with the, um, implementation or execution of the plan in two thousand and fourteen.
Second that.
Those in favor of that motion indicate, saying aye please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two, motion passes. Okay. And we'll still have, uh, special articles on, uh, collective bargaining agreement, Public Works. And, uh, any further budgetary items now? I'd like to go into reports from the various boards, committees, they have met over the last two weeks. Take them right from the, what do they are in our packet, there was a, uh, planning board session, about budget.
Yep, planning board did meet.
On the eighth end of fifteenth?
That's correct.
Any significant highlights?
Uh, a bit, uh, there was a time extension request, uh, for, uh, building manufactured industry, industries over on, uh, Daniel Plummer Road, and that was granted a one-year extent, uh, extension. There was a conceptual site plan for proposed Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through and a ATM chaos, got six out Mass Street, that's right next to, uh.
Cumberland Farms.
Cumbies.
One under construction to the left of it.
So they'll be taking that house down.
Yep.
And then putting in like a circular.
Yeah.
According to the conceptual plan.
Right.
Right?
I guess you're doing fine with doing my report for me.
No, I'm just curious, is that, is that what it is, they take that, is that's a house that's there?
The house is, house is proposed, to be gone, that's right, it's basically the same, uh, what they had proposed in the, uh, the, the last time.
Oh, it's the same place, okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, no.
I, I, at first I thought that, that Dunkin's wanted to do where Cumbies is now, I didn't know that they were.
You wanna picture, Scott?
Yeah, sure.
I have, I have extras, gonna be part of my report, but Phil's covering it now, so we'll pass them out to the board. I'll save one for me, there you go.
Let's see if you've seen this.
All that was, was a conceptual.
I'm helping you, Phil.
Uh, with comments that he applicant on the, uh, proposed project, and, uh, conceptual comments are not binding, uh, on the reviews, and discussion range from transportation and traffic uh, to acc- access aesthetics, the driveways and parking. Uh, there are, uh, some required variances for the proposed use, um, so, that's where that was. They'd be coming back if they get their variances or when they get their variances.
Just curious, is it, were they, the, is this, uh, you probably can't comment on it, but is it, seemed to be favorably viewed upon, or what, what is it?
Just a conceptual, I mean, there, there are, there are concerns, uh, two concerns that I had, number one was the, uh, the architecture uh, fitting into the, into the neighborhood, and, um, it's, uh, the other thing I had was the, I asked and they didn't have the answer at that point, was the elevation difference between the back corner of the pavement and the, um, uh, the back street there.
Knoll crest.
Yeah, uh, knoll crest, but the elevation difference was, uh, to see if there was a possible, uh, there was discussion of possible.
Exit.
Well, yeah, you know, it, it all depends on how you look at it. Because if you have an exit, all you're doing is taking that traffic and dumping it into Mountain Road, okay? Or do you use that as an entrance? Possibly, you know, so there's different ways to look at that also, so, uh, there was some of the things they were gonna take into consideration, there was even couldn't, even asking why the kiosk, uh, that was there, and the reason why they had the kiosk with the ATMs, uh, it's a, it's a revenue generator, uh, and you know, quite frankly, it might be good for the downtown area, I don't, I don't, I don't know, because there are, uh, where the ATMs are, they aren't visible like that, I mean, you have one that's at the, uh, it's in the lobby at the post office in the bank.
Yeah, there's another one, but the TD Bank.
Well, yeah, but they, they're not quite as visible in that area, and one being visible over here, it, it might benefit the local businesses too, I, I, I don't know.
Did you get a, did you get an elevation, what was the concern on the building, I was just curious?
No, the style, the architecture.
That's what I'm talking about, I, I didn't, I, I don't, this is just a footprint line, I mean, is there like, was there, did they provide you with an elevation?
Well, uh, Brian Rose, Brian Rose put some in, and the ones that he put in there, definitely I don't think fit in there. I was looking for something more towards, uh, uh, you know, a Greek revival type architecture, which would be, you know, the period style, and I asked them if they, what they had done for, no, there's different.
Sounds Greek to me.
Dor- Dora columns or Corinthian columns?
Whichever ones, whichever ones they want, yeah, you know.
You remember, you.
So, uh, what they've done in other areas of the country.
Yeah.
Uh, that might, might fit in there.
Adobe?
Oh, I don't know.
I'd, I'd be more concerned as to why there's a second curb cut and why they couldn't combine driveways with the new Cumberland Farms as opposed to having two separate access points, and it's just, oh.
But they're not, they're not.
Our planning rep will take that into consideration. Could you move on to the, any other significant items?
Yeah, and then there was a conceptual site plan, uh, for mixed-use development, uh, the mill at Hadley Falls, uh, the Village Commercial, um, there was, uh, conceptual comments on, uh, on an application, uh, a presentation, it was, uh, it wasn't formal plans, the formal plans are in the process of being developed, but the, uh, the woman came and, you know, with her, uh, you know, was a, 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 a nice drawing type of sketch, uh, with concepts, she had, uh, concepts and, and thoughts that she had put down on that, and the, um, the engineering, which is, uh, I believe she said it was, uh, Dennis Myers, uh, was gonna be doing it, uh, was gonna be taking that and putting it on, you know, onto, on the formal plans, and she'd be back.
When you say mixed-use, is that, you're talking like retail residential, is that what?
Yeah, she had.
Similar to what they were talking about putting there a long time ago?
Well, this was a little bit more, she also had, she had one area that, uh, she expanded upon it because she is apparently looking to buy, uh, possibly buy the Cumberland.
Right.
Uh, property, so she's hoping to be able to incorporate that into this, into, into the parcel. Uh, she had, uh, some things with phasing, I mean, she had some interesting concepts where she was using the waterfront, uh, where you'd be able to possibly go down and they might be able to have some floating removable docks to come out in the, in the winter, uh, possibly looking at the, uh, at the, at the dam, you know, the dam property, and as to whether or not, uh, it was gonna be you. Different ways of incorporating that into like a smokehouse or something along.
And I, I did take liberty of reading the minutes from that meeting and, uh, reviving the concept of a river walk.
Exactly, well, the river walk.
On the edge of the property, along the river, it would, it would tie back into the rail trail.
Yeah, the Riverwalk concept was actually brought up many, many, many years ago, uh.
Elmer Pease brought that forward with his plan.
Before Elmer Pease even had it, before Janigan owned the property, the former owner, uh, had, came in with a, uh, a plan that included a Riverwalk on it.
The big issue there is always parking, they talked about what they're gonna do to address the parking.
No, uh, they, they did, uh, they had, uh, one, one of the issues that came up too was the access over onto Union Street, that access. But, uh, there was, uh, there was some, uh, parking, and there was a final phase if the area, uh, worked out. She was looking at, um, some, uh, uh, elderly housing, uh, kinda like duplexes into a circle around. She had, you know, she had a duck pond, possible duck pond placed in there, I mean, it, it was, it was an interesting concept, uh, and one of the comments that was made, that, that there was a lot on, on the drawing, you know, there was, there were a lot of different things on it. And that's what she said, that these were all, you know, ideas and thoughts that she had, they may not all be able to be worked out, but that one with the pond and, and I think it was fifteen or sixteen, uh, total units, uh, that went around in a circle with handicaps, you know, the, the parking spaces, that may not materialize, it just may not be the room for it, but depending on how the other things went, uh, this was a final concept that if, if it could be fitted in, you know, she liked it.
No, I mean, this is, this is kind of exciting, because.
Oh, yeah.
In the last four years or five years, we've had pretty much, I mean, at our board, we've heard not, not a whole lot. Uh, we had the beautiful Abington Square was very well done, and, um, and that, you know, it'd be nice if we can, you know, start to see some, you know, good, good development. Um, our folks, Mark, the, that whole, was it seventy-something, ninety, I'm trying to remember that, the incentive that if somebody rehabs a building, um, within the district, we can offer a tax, we passed that.
Mm-hmm.
Couple of years.
I don't know if this is in it.
No, I, I'm, I, I know, I'm, I'm aware of that, but I guess where I was driving at is, we adopted an RSA which allows the Board of Selectmen to abate taxes up to five years for any increase in valuation when somebody enhances or, you know, does an improvement to their building.
Well, Derek was, she's been to economic development.
Okay.
She has been to economic development, and, I mean, this has to move to some different.
Right, no, I guess where I'm.
I haven't seen her yet, we haven't, I, I mean.
I, I think the board's getting too far ahead on this conceptual plan, so I, I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna.
Or maybe she's talked.
Talked to Derek.
Maybe that's what.
Mister Chair, I'm not, I'm not trying to get ahead of anything, all I know is that I look at those numbers, and when you talk about this, or what you're talking about, will, will help us deal with those numbers. So, you know, we can jerk around all we want on some of these other things, but it's, if, and I know it's not, it's outside of our control, Mister Chair, but if it means that, you know, we have to assist or provide whatever assistance we can to try and make sure that these proposals, if they're quality proposals, see the light of day, and they get built, that's a good thing for our tax base.
I, I know when we had our Economic Development Committee meeting the other night, we didn't have a quorum, and I know he was looking for input from the board, and unfortunately, it didn't happen, because we didn't have the quorum, but, um, he's, he's, he's very positive, he's thinking positively what.
Well, I think it's, it's very encouraging, Mark, because you're seeing this plan, you're seeing that the restaurant on High Street, hopefully that'll open up in the next month, I, I think things are starting to turn in the village.
Turned around, we turned, we turned things around.
Trestle was fully.
The trestle, I know State Farm insurance agent's coming in on Bridge Street, I mean, there's things that are slowly, it's starting to go.
Had to slip that one.
On which street?
Uh, right by the bridge.
Oh, right.
On Main Street.
You did say, you did say.
I said bridge, yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's, no, it is encouraging when you're starting to see some of this, because we've gone for a very, very long time without a whole lot going on. A lot of times it just takes one, and that, the reason why I brought up that, that RSA that we adopted was that there may be people that are in the Village area that want to make improvements, you know, whether it be the Gap Building or others, that if they invest some money into this, they, you know, the, this board can abate taxes.
Phil?
Uh, can I keep going now?
Would you continue with the fifteenth of November?
Okay, we're moving on to the next one, please. Uh, okay, there was a, um, an application to waive impact fees on, on a house that had been demolished and sat idle for, uh, approximately four or five years, and, uh, the impact fees, the board did not approve the waiver application. And there was a zoning amendment workshop, and, uh, then we, uh, had a meeting on the fifteenth, and there was a, uh, an extension, we voted to continue the one, uh, hearing that we had for the new business, which was to, uh, it was a lot line adjustment, and then, uh, we had a workshop on the, uh, some zoning articles, proposed zoning changes, and there was also a approval of the, uh, development agreement uh, between the Planning Board and the Shirley Hill and Kennedy Hill Road subdivision. Uh, that had been ongoing, and those were finally finalized. And that was basically it.
Thank you. Last week, there was a, a meeting of the Library Trustees I attended. At that meeting of the Library Trustees, they approved or reaffirmed some policies that, concerning their internal operations on the position of the Director of the Library. Also policies concerning the circulation and what to do with, there's a, a policy concerning law enforcement requests. A part-time staff member of the library submitted her resignation. And the library has announced that they're hosting a breakfast, an appreciation breakfast for the library staff in early December. And that was it. Parks and Recreation, I believe, was-
The, meeting was held October seventeenth, I'm sorry. Let me start over here, the meeting, September nineteenth, reviewed, meeting October seventeenth. The Director's Report basically says that the pools have been winterized. Issues at the Barnard Pool still exist with the skimmer lines. Two of the four skimmer lines have been reviewed, he believes two of them may have issues in them. Depending on Blue Dolphin, whether they have time to do them this year prior to the winter and the cold weather sets in. If they don't have the time, they may have to encumber the money for next spring. They're working on getting prices and quotes for that. The field at Barnard Park, the track has been completely redone. All of surfaces are in good shape now, the hazards have been taken away, everything's working good there. I know Rick is working with Carl to get some balloon and the dirt out of the DPW pit to get it sifted. I guess they've had conversations back and forth. Some of the football fields are in pretty rough shape, they need to make some repairs to some of them. He'd like to try to get the repairs done to them prior to the winter setting in. He'd like to get the holes filled that are, the divots and some of the, some of the major holes that are there, he'd like to try to get those filled up so that they can start early next year and start in fresh, so that all the, the new grass and the slot feeding that they do, or seeding that they do, will be able to be well situated before the season starts. Most of the, the raking has been done. The leaf blower they had had some significant engine problems. I have not talked to Rick, or he has not called me. I'm not sure if he has purchased a new engine for the, for the vacuum machine to suck the leaves up into the back of the trailer, or they may purchase a new one, he's working on getting an idea as to what the issues are on that. It was considerable discussion with the, the group as to whether he continues with the type of vacuum he has now or go with a, one that goes on the back of a lawnmower tractor. They're still discussing with that, I guess the next meeting, we're gonna kinda figure out where we're gonna go down that road. But the parks, everything are getting cleaned up, getting winterized, lawnmowers have been pretty much put away, snow blowers are out, ready to go. That's it.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
And I noticed in our packet was information about zoning board of adjustment. Anyone who wants to cover that?
We don't have a rep to ZBA, but we've put that in for information purposes only, in case there's a decision there that you don't agree with.
The summary is on the website concerning the zoning board of adjustment.
Just so the board realizes, next week you will have a request under the new state law, RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine dash AA for Division of Involuntarily Merge Lots, and I have Attorney Dreschel looking that over to give you guidance, because this will be the first request you have of this nature.
This is to separate them?
Yes. They were listed as five separate tracks on a nineteen oh five plan, recorded plan. There was a house on it, and it, and health structures that take up three of those five lots. And the petitioner is looking to, for the selectman to release it into two. And the way I read the statute, that's why I'm having Attorney Dreschel look at it. I'm not sure you can release it into five, and he's asking you to release into two, but that's more like a subdivision, and-
I'm gonna say that.
So it seems to me that seems more like to go to the Planning Board, but we'll see what Attorney Dreschel says. Hopefully, he'll have a response for you before next Monday's meeting.
Any further discussion for public session here? Is there a need for a non-public this evening?
Yes.
Hey, Lou.
Who would like to address that one? I'm sorry, you had-
I, the Economic Development Committee, we had our, we had our meeting. As previously stated, we didn't have a quorum, so it was just a general business get-together. We did have the people come over and work on the Dunkin' Donuts. However, though, the I two ninety-three exit six and seven corridor study, they're having a meeting in Manchester at the Aldamatic Chambers, December twelfth at seven PM.
That's a public meeting?
Yes, correct.
On the twelfth?
Yes, the Gofftown Hookset in Manchester had been chosen. There's a Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies Group that's now being formed. We have been chosen, it's a pilot program. We're, we're trying to get more information on it. The committee's next meeting on this group is meeting the eleventh of, the eleventh of December, between three and four thirty at the New Hampshire-
Is this an initiative of the Southern Planning Commission?
Yeah, yeah, they're meeting, they're meeting at the New Hampshire Department of Resources Economics Development. And it says note, the Board of Selectmen have not yet appointed someone to serve on the CEDS Strategies Committee. So, I don't know.
Be appropriate for them to bring some information to the board as to-
Yeah, I'll, I'll make, I'll make mention of that, but that was it.
If I could just do a quick one on the Super Commission?
Please.
We had Matt talked about some, cleaning up some loose ends relative to both Mass Road work and the work on, is it Temple Court, I believe? Think of that, there's just some loose ends to clean up there. Most of the discussion revolved around the intermunicipal agreement with the City of Manchester for the rates, rate setting. There's a meeting the first week in December, it looks like we're gonna propose, or we will be proposing actually a reduction. We used estimates for both biological oxygen demand and total suspended solids, they were overestimated for many, many years. We now have better historical numbers, so it looks like there'll probably actually be a drop in rates if we have our way in the meeting in early December.
That's the one that though they did go forward with in their estimate for the budget, I believe?
Correct.
The reduced one?
That's correct, yeah.
This municipal agreement with Manchester and several other communities has been under discussion, I think, two or more years, so- I assume they're pretty close to wrapping it up and getting the document signed.
Yeah, they are, the draft's been reviewed by the attorneys and ready to go forward, so.
And it's probably a, is it a twenty-year agreement? Something, it has a, a long life, I'm not sure if it's twenty, it might be ten?
I think it might be ten, I, I don't know the answer, but you're right, it is, is not revisited that frequently.
Which is probably good, since it's taken two years to put it in place. Who would like to address any need for non-public sessions?
I'll make, make a motion.
Do you need non-public?
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, the legal.
Make a motion going to non-public session, RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two, under E legal claims. And do we need the D as well?
Yep.
And the land and real estates.
Second.
I'll take a roll call for going into non-public, Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
David, yes?
Yes.
And yes.
And yes, five, five yeses. So, when we come out-